Good evening, everyone. Mayor Sylvester is out of town. I will be taking over the meeting today. Thank you for joining us for our regular meeting here at City Council for January 27th. For those of you wishing to address the City Council of any item on the agenda or under public appearances or oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance at the council chambers and submit to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible and submit to a city clerk. Now may we call the meeting, or let's do the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Here.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester? Ms. Manalo?
Present. Thank you very much. Today, we have a presentation, Lesi, proclaiming the month of February Black History Month in Daly City. And today, to receive it, is Mr. Shaquille Ali from the president of the Jefferson Elementary School Board District.
So, this proclamation is for Black History Month 2020, whereas February is officially celebrated as Black History Month to honor the achievements of African Americans in general, as well as their ongoing role in the development of the United States and their contributions to the City of Daly City in particular. And whereas in 1926, historian and author Dr. Carter G. Woodson, also known as the father of Black History Studies, introduced Negro History Week to resist racism and to highlight the role of Blacks that have played in the development of civilization. And whereas in 1992, the City of Daly City began honoring African Americans by observing Juneteenth, the oldest known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States. And over time, the Juneteenth commemoration grew into the celebration of Black History Month. And whereas African Americans residing in Daly City have contributed to the betterment of our community through their skills, their volunteerism, their strength and vitality, their civic pride, business ventures. And whereas this year, 2020, marks the 28th consecutive year of commemorating Black History in Daly City, we pause to reflect on a national theme, Black Americans and the Vote, marking the sequential of the 15th Amendment and the right of the Black man to vote after Civil War. And this year also marks the centennial of the 19th Amendment and the culmination of the women's suffrage movement, highlighting the ongoing struggle on both the Black men and Black women's right to vote. And whereas a tribute to African history and culture in Daly City, the Daly City Library and Recreation Services, in conjunction with the African American Community Initiative of Sabateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, will host a celebration featuring cultural dance performances by Dimensions Dance Theater, vocalists, inspiring speakers, and soul food. And everyone remember this, it's gonna be, whereas the community is invited to a free event to be held from 12 o'clock to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, February 15th, at Cafe Dodger in Daly City. Now therefore, Glenn Sylvester, Mayor of City of Daly City, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim February 2020 Black History Month here in Daly City. And we have school board member Shaquille Ali to here to receive it.
Evening.
All times this way. Okay. Good evening, everyone. First of all, thanks to all the council people and the mayor who's not here. I gladly accept this proclamation, and I'd like to really accept it on behalf of my mom. She, I was born in San Francisco, but we moved to Daly City when I was very young. And I owe a lot to some of my mentors from what I grew up in, in the Bay Shore District in Midway Village, public housing. One of those people is Ike Elliott, a lot of you may remember him. Another is Ron Jackson. I'd like to also thank Kermit and Joseph K. Those were some of the people that helped me to decide that I wanted to work with youth for the rest of my life. So I became a counselor and a teacher, and I'm also a school board member. So I'm not here to give a long speech, I'm really just here to accept the proclamation. But I just wanted to put that out there that I'm very thankful and grateful and give much gratitude, not only to the council, but to all the people in our great city of Daly City. And I want to also add in there a proud more in coma. So everyone, please come out. The date again is February 15th, I believe, right? February 15th, 12 o'clock to 3 o'clock at Dodger Center. I'll be there speaking again a little bit about education. There'll be people talking about wellness and what's other thing. That's pretty much it. Soul food, we convention soul food, you know, the things people like to eat. But anyway, thanks once again.
Thank you so much, Lesi, for doing always an amazing job in organizing. Now we're moving on to the approval. Unless any of my colleagues would like to say anything, I give opportunity for them to speak at this moment.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to say, because I've known you a very long time, and your mom, and so proud of you, and now that you're a teacher, and have given so much back on the school board, and the leadership that you show, and that you are part of history, and that I remember when, it's hard, it's very hard. And everything you've gone through, you've grown and became such a man and a mentor to your children. And they themselves are emulating your steps. And I can't be any prouder of you as a friend and as an elected, where you shine so much in education and being a leader for other youth of color and all youth, because I've seen it, I know you do it, and your mom does it. So blessings to you, energy continue, and we'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's your mama right now.
Good evening. Your son acknowledged you earlier, and really, when he received the proclamation, and really said it's through you and what you've taught him.
Can I have, as well?
Yes, Dr. Rod?
I just want to say that, you know, in my journey, if it wasn't for African American history, I wouldn't have wanted to learn about my own history. And it's through Black culture, through hip-hop, that really shed the light on these parallel experiences in talking about oppression and also liberation. And I just want to leave on this quote by Malcolm X. He said that "history is a people's memory." And without those memories, then there's, he said, "Man is demoted to lower animals," right? So this understanding of, like, history is such a powerful thing, that it not just shed light on myself, but the importance of Black lives, and how it's important for people of color, and those that need to understand the importance of Black bodies and what they represent in our society. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Any others? Okay. Thank you so much. So everyone, please remember to celebrate that Saturday, February 15th. We all hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah, let's do that. All right. Now, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of January 13th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Let me hear her second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Now, moving on to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda, unless there are any items pulled?
Motion to approve consent?
Motion to approve the consent.
Okay, let me hear her second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, moving on to our public hearing. Item number seven, approval of the resolution approving government code section 52201, summary report in connection with a disposition and development of property by and between the City of Daly City and Equity Residential. We have staff with Ms. Motherhead and also Attorney Zimmerman.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Member, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Just to clarify, this summary report does apply to property at 6401 Mission Street, which I don't think was clearly identified in the agenda. After the dissolution of redevelopment in 2011, the City of Daly City Successor Agency drafted a long-range property management plan that detailed the disposition strategies for former redevelopment agency properties. The property that is the subject of tonight's report, located at 6401 Mission Street, was marketed in 2017, and subsequently Equity Residential was selected as the preferred developer. Their proposal includes a purchase price of $540,000 and a development concept of 170 multifamily residential units. Through ongoing negotiations, the city and the developer created a draft disposition development agreement that the council will be reviewing at the next item here, that sets forth terms and conditions of the sale and development of the site. Prior to the sale of the site, it is necessary that the city create and make available a fair use report pursuant to California Government Code Section 52201 that affirms the fair use of the property and its creation of an economic opportunity. Cosmont, an independent consultant of the city, prepared the Government Code Section 52201 summary report in compliance with the code. Ken Hira of Cosmont, which I believe is a familiar face for you all, is here this evening to present the information and findings contained in the report. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Ken Hira.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Mayor and members of the council. Hope everybody's doing well, it's good to be here. As Ms. Motherhead mentioned, we've prepared a report that's required effectively upon sale of property, and it's pursued the Government Code 52201. It's a relatively straightforward law that needs to be followed, and reporting that needs to be followed. And so I'm going to walk through some of the steps that, and it's pretty succinct in terms of what is required. I want to walk through that and then apply the facts of this particular sale. And as mentioned in the staff report, which does a very good job of reflecting the requirements of the report and our report being written accordingly, you know, the history of the competitive process and where we're at today is, I think, a project that's coming to fruition with the potential of sale and ultimate development. Having said that, here are some of the key components of the report that are required. The summary of the disposition itself, which is effectively the agreement, and that's the disposition and development agreement, which is in giraffe but before you tonight as well, that's one component. A second component is the cost related to the city. I'm trying to summarize to a degree what's required, but the cost to the city, what does it cost to sell this property, if you will? A second or third would be an evaluation, you know, of value of the property pursuant to what we'll call highest and best use. And I want to point back to some of the facts on that in a second, but that value is very important to establish. And then next is effectively the value of purchase itself, which is the purchase price. And then any difference between those two values, sort of the highest and best use, and what a developer or buyer is buying the property for, and what it's using it for. And then ultimately, the test for 52201 and the government code is really what is the economic opportunity, and are those economic opportunity hurdles achieved? And I'll walk through that as well. In terms of the facts, going back to when Equity Residential had responded to an RFQ, request for qualifications and request for proposal, back in 2018, they had initially offered $500,000 for the property. And in fact, upon an appraisal by the city, which is, I think, in July of 2018, the appraisal was $540,000, as established as that value, the component I mentioned earlier, and highest and best use. Equity did revise their offer at $540,000. So now their offer and that value they're paying for the property, a purchase price, is in fact equal to the established value pursuant to highest and best use and appraised value. So having said that, we did an evaluation, in fact, what we call a residual land valuation, which is kind of evaluating a pro forma, which was in fact their pro forma, and then kind of doing a peer review and concluding that, in fact, the property is worth $540,000. And that was part of our work that we've been doing for you from an economic development perspective. So let me just walk through some of the merits of the site. And so if $540,000 is the value, $540,000 is what they're offering, there's a zero differential. And so by way of economic development or economic opportunity tests, there are at least two, in fact, three that they meet. One is job creation. Two is at least a 15% increase in property tax revenue, as a function of what was previously being received. And then three is delivery of affordable housing. So I want to walk through some of the merits in our report, which is under employment creation. The project estimates that there's 374, it says 374, 375, I think there was some rounding, even if you call it a typo, I think there's rounding when you ultimately do by decimals, it's, well, I'll call it 375. There's 375 jobs that will be created as a function of the construction of the project. The project construction, total project cost, I'll give you an estimate, is around $60 million. So as a matter of that, there's 375 construction jobs, and then from that, there is effectively your full-time equivalent, permanent jobs, or permanent jobs that get created from that, a 56. And under the labor code, having met those job requirements as part of that test, there's also, beyond that, there's the economic activity, which, let me just get to my notes here. And here it is. On economic activity, there is $74 million of economic activity during construction, and there's $33 million in wage payments, if you will, also occurring during construction, which is part of that number. And then after completion, on a permanent basis, there's $9.4 million per year that would be created in value for the city, economic impact, and $3.6 million in wage creation on a permanent basis. So when you combine those, the economic activity and the job creation, which you end up with is meeting the test, that first test that I mentioned, which is that you have achieved the economic activity of job creation pursuant to the 52201 requirements. Secondly, in terms of value creation, if the property was generating basically zero tax revenue, because it was, it's being owned by the former redevelopment agency, that zero now turns into a positive, and it's more than the 15% increase. The net financial impact or fiscal impact to the city is $183,000 per year. So again, the test of meeting the above 15% increase in property tax revenues is being met. And then furthermore, the project is contemplated as up to 170 residential units, multifamily rental units. And of those, there are 17 that are going to be built affordable, low-income affordable. So yet another part of the government code is actually met, in so much as the developers bringing the project to you that delivers affordable housing. And then in addition to that, just to point out a few other things, which is in our report, in Roman numeral eight, the project converts a longtime underutilized piece of property, vacant land, that in our opinion offers a solution to some of the critical housing stock that's needed in the city and across the state for that matter, and 17 units that are affordable. Secondly, the project does include public artwork and some open space, an important corridor along Mission Street. And third, the project includes several green features, which again are sort of more intangible, if you will, but very real benefits to the community. So given all the facts, we've concluded that the property is deemed, in our estimation pursuant to the code, acceptable to be sold based on the meeting of these merits, and really the merits of the project. I look at it holistically as well, is that we've been through this process over the last couple of years, in terms of going out to find a suitable development and a suitable developer, if you will. As you know, I refer to the developers as partners. You, I think you have a partner at the table who could effectuate a future development site from your property management plan, and build a project that is germane and appropriate to your city, and meets very critical government code requirements. Just also for the record, we're working on many of these 52201 reports for many cities across California as we speak. And so, you know, we're very comfortable with writing this type of report and coming up with these types of findings. Available for questions?
Thank you. If there are any questions, from my colleagues?
I just have a real quick one. I know that consideration, because when I saw this on the, like, the agenda, but was there any discussions on, even though I know you don't have to, or whatever, on us using the union labor for any of our jobs?
Well, there wasn't really a discussion in so much as, at least from a subsidy perspective, there's zero economic subsidy. So there's no gift, if you will, from the city of public funds.
Oh, okay. And then are we going to use the prevailing wage? What are we doing for our labor?
Those are aspects that will be discussed in the disposition development agreement. This is a summary report for fair use, that the property is within the government. So those considerations were not considered as part of this report.
Okay, but we are going to be discussing that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So no other questions on this item? I know that this has been empty for a while. To give the audience a perspective of where this is exactly, top of the hill, the very corner, the triangular piece right there, what is across Mitsubishi right now, that empty lot right there is what we're talking about, and for those of you watching on TV. It's, you know, it was, is a parcel of Daly City's and used to be redevelopment, and at this point, it seems like there's been some extensive feasibility studies. And, you know, it would be housing, more housing on, at that area, but also they would provide the low-market rate units at 10% that we require. So do we have to open? Okay. Motion to open public hearing, please?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. I don't see any cards for this item here, so motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Thank you very much. So moving forward, doc resolution by roll call. So I make a motion to, I move to adopt a resolution.
Second.
Okay. May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight, adoption of the resolution approving the disposition and development agreement, DDA, between the City and Equity Residential for property located at 6401 Mission Street. And we have staff here again for the area we're talking about. Any, anything in particular to talk about regarding the disposition and development agreement for the DDA, please?
Sure. First, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor for situating us where the property is. Usually, as a planner, I do that, I guess I failed to do that, but it was a good point to bring up. This is that vacant parcel at the top of the hill adjacent to the 88 Hillside Development at John Daly, Mission Street in Brunswick. Again, just sort of to recap the history of the site, initiated by the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies in 2011, the City of Daly City Successor Agency drafted a long-range property management plan, which detailed disposition strategies for former redevelopment agency properties. The property management plan was approved in 2015, and the property located at 6401 Mission Street was included in the long-range property management plan as a site to be retained for future development. In March 2017, the city marketed the site through a competitive RFQ process. Equity was selected as the preferred developer, and on April 9th, 2018, the City Council approved an exclusive negotiating agreement between the City of Daly City and Equity Residential for the property located at 6401 Mission Street. Since that time, the City and Equity Residential have negotiated the project design and the terms and conditions of the DDA. The proposed DDA is for a proposed development of the property as a multiple-family resident, rental housing development of up to 10 stories and consisting of up to 170 residential units, including approximately 17 apartments that will be affordable to low-income households. This would also include ground floor publicly accessible open space and additional amenities, including public art. Once Equity Residential entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city, they applied for a general plan amendment, plan development amendment, and design review to consider the change of zoning from office to the proposed multifamily development that's identified in the draft disposition and development agreement that's being considered tonight. The developer and city staff have diligently processed the entitlement application, and it is anticipated that the planning commission and city council will review the entitlements in April of this year. The disposition and development agreement lays out a variety of business deal points. The draft DDA was attached to the staff report and made available for public review. I'm going to highlight just a couple of the deal points, there's a lot of legalese in there, but I think some of the germane points were identified in the staff report. The DDA identifies the description for the development plan, which I've already mentioned. There's a little more specificity in there, but essentially, we're looking at 170 units of multifamily residential. The purchase price is indicated at $540,000, and that would be paid in cash. In terms of organized labor, maybe to back up a little, it's important- to consider the change of zoning from office to the proposed multifamily development that's identified in the draft disposition and development agreement that's being considered tonight. The developer and city staff have diligently processed the entitlement application, and it is anticipated that the planning commission and city council will review the entitlements in April of this year. The disposition and development agreement lays out a variety of business deal points. The draft DDA was attached to the staff report and made available for public review. I'm going to highlight just a couple of the deal points. There's, there's a lot of legalese in there, but I think some of the germane points were identified in the staff report. The DDA identifies the description for the development plan, which I've already mentioned. There's a little more specificity in there, but essentially, we're looking at 170 units of multifamily residential. The purchase price is indicated at $540,000, and that would be paid in cash. In terms of organized labor, maybe to back up a little, it's important to note that the project as proposed would be using modular construction, which means elements of the building would be built off-site and then brought to the site and assembled. So in terms of organized labor, the off-site fabrication of the modular units would be assembled in the greater Seattle and greater Portland areas. Several of the manufacturing partners do utilize union labor in their facilities, including Supreme Steel, which will be constructing all of the steel for the project. Once those modular units are brought onsite, there would be onsite construction and assembly, and that will involve working with local unions to create blended crews of ironworkers, carpenters, and laborers. The developer's local partner, Swinton Builders, is signatory to the carpenters and laborers' unions, and will play an instrumental role in facilitating the creation of these crews and the execution of the onsite work. As already mentioned, Equity Residential will be meeting the city's inclusionary housing ordinance by providing 10% of the units for families earning 70% of the area mean income. So they've met that requirement. And then, I think one of the fun, sort of creative parts about this project is that they will be providing public art at the northern tip of the project site with an open plaza area. The DDA specifies how that public art would be selected, and essentially, what would happen is, some public art concepts, just some ideas would be presented to the city's Arts and Culture Commission, and then based on feedback from the Arts and Culture Commission, the development team would then come up with a specific art piece that would essentially be brought to the city council for approval. The installation and maintenance of the artwork would be borne by the developer, and a value not to exceed $100,000 has been established. The draft DDA was made available for public inspection pursuant to the California Government Code. Staff is recommending that the council conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the disposition and development agreement with Equity Residential for the property at 6401 Mission Street. The development team is also here, if there's some additional questions of the team, as well as staff being available.
Thank you very much. As you mentioned earlier, with, I do have a question, that I think they've chosen their contractor to be Swinton, and that they will be working with local unions with this project, but since it's modular, it's going to be built off-site, but when, when they do need laborers, it will be working with the unions, as mentioned?
In a blended crew format, yes.
In a blended crew format. Okay. And then the other question I do have is, it mentions 70% AMI for the below-market rate units. What are those units in particular? How many units, and what are the unit sizes?
I...
I mean, I know the units, there's 17 units, but what are the unit sizes that are being proposed?
Right. I don't know the square footage, but I believe all the units in the development are one-bedroom?
Studios, I'm sorry.
Sorry? Yeah.
Thank you.
So our ordinance require that they be equally distributed throughout the building, and that their, the proportions are reflected, the proportions are similar to the proportions of the overall project. So 20% of the affordable units are two, 20% of the units are two-bedroom, then 20% of the affordable units would be two-bedroom.
They match the mix, and they, they're distributed evenly throughout the building.
Great. So they're all studios?
They are studios, they're, sorry, they're micro units, studio units, and one-bedroom units.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. I did notice, you know, when we did have our committee meetings prior, a lot of the items that were discussed are put forth here, and one of the great things is that it's memorialized around ensuring there's that public art piece that was talked about, and really involving the community. So for me, it's great to see that in here, and memorialize in a way to have the community more involved, especially with public art, that will be in a really pivotal place right at top of the hill.
Very.
And then, in the past, you mentioned that it would be one of the first in California if it were to happen. Is that still, using the modular technique for building, is that still, would that still be the first in California?
That's true. This, yes, this is, what we're proposing is a panelized system that's called Sustainable Living Innovations. They've built a prototype project in Seattle, and we're working on another project with them in Seattle right now. This would be their first project in California.
Okay, thank you. I think those are all my questions. Do my colleagues have any questions for the developer here, or Equity?
I just, I'm unfamiliar with micro units. What is the difference between a micro unit and a regular studio?
I think it's, it's a smaller studio unit, I guess I would say.
Okay. I'm just trying to, okay. In my head, I'm thinking like, a studio is really small, and then a micro unit is even smaller? So it's like a dorm room?
No, it's not, it's not a dorm room. No, it's got a, it's got a full bathroom and a kitchen, and it's, you know, a studio, I think the definition has changed, you know, over time, but a studio unit may be, and I'm going to get this wrong, it could be like, you know, call it 450 square feet, something like that. A micro unit might be even smaller than that, and I don't recall exactly what we have in the project right now, but it, you know, it might be a 350 or 400 square foot unit.
Okay. And then, just a little bit more definition and clarity around the idea of modular construction for those at home. Is it kind of like, okay, I'm just going to use my imagination here, is it kind of like Legos that are created, and then it is built over there, and then came over, and you click it on, kind of like Legos?
In a, in a sense. I mean, there's all different kinds of modular construction. This particular system, you know, sometimes there are systems that are built as a kind of, you know, cell or a unit off-site, and the unit gets shipped. Or it'd be a portion of a unit, and those get kind of snapped together. In this case, it's panelized, so there's floor panels, and there's wall panels, and they, they already have the power and the MEP systems built within them. And essentially, with this system, you know, the ironworkers are coming out, and they're building a steel frame, and as they're building the steel frame, these panels show up and get, you know, hung off of the frame, so to speak.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you. Do you know about what percentage? I know that Ms. Mother said you were saying about, it's mixed labor. Is there a percentage that you know there would be local labor?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Like it'll be local, rather than, I know, which I appreciate, I know that Seattle particular thing, they do have a mix, and they do use some union, because we have modular in, that unions use here locally as well, which is relatively new, but, but at least they're trying to do that and bringing that in. But what percentage would they use as a local, in our local unions?
I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. If somebody could find that out, that'd be great, for a local.
We can do that.
Yeah. Thank you very much, appreciate it, but thank you for the great presentation.
Thank you. Also, for the audience and people that would be interested, when you say 70% AMI, what is, I think it'd be helpful just to say what exactly those income ranges are.
Yeah.
Something that I know...
Ah, Betsy.
It would be helpful for, for our community to understand.
Can you go get the, okay, sorry about that.
It's okay.
And that fluctuates, obviously, every year, so what would happen is the units get priced once we're at the point of distributing a marketing plan. So the units would get priced well into construction. So, so it's not a number that we could say tonight would be the number, but I understand you just want it for illustrative purposes.
Yes, definitely. I think many times when speaking to community members, their question is always, how much is the rent? What income levels will be available? Because they want to know if they qualify. So if we have that information for our community, it'll be helpful, and if anything, I appreciate if Betsy can get it with me, get it later on, and at least provide that information. Thank you. Are there, I know this is the disposition portion of it, but is, is there any conceptual drawings we could look at right now, while we're waiting for?
I don't have any. Right. So, so also, just, the development will actually get brought to the city council, the specifics of the development, the elements of the affordable housing plan will all be included in the entitlement package, which should come before the council late April, early May.
Great, thank you. Sure. Motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. At this moment, there are no cards on this item again. Motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All right, thank you very much. So I think if that was, it could be included in the minutes, I think it would suffice. When Betsy gets that information, to include it in the minutes, so that the public will know what the AMI level is, how much, roughly, the rent will be, et cetera, so we can move forward. So, is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the disposition and development agreement, DDA, between the city and Equity Residential for property located at 6401 Mission Street?
So move.
I have, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All, roll call, please.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalow?
Aye. Thank you very much. Item number nine, adoption of resolution authorizing city's participation in the statewide community infrastructure program with the California Statewide Communities Development Once again, Ms. Motherhead, Attorney Zimmerman.
All right, item number three. Okay. Before you this evening is a resolution authorizing the city's participation in the statewide community infrastructure program, also called SKEP, with the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, in order to enable property owners to finance public capital improvements and/or development impact fees imposed on new developments in the city. CSCDA is a joint powers authority sponsored by the League of California Cities and the California State Association of Counties. SKEP was instituted by CSCDA to allow owners of property in participating cities to finance the development impact fees that would be payable by property owners upon receiving development entitlements or building permits. The proposed resolution authorizes CDCDA to accept applications from owners of property within our planning jurisdiction to apply for tax-exempt financing of public capital improvements and development impact fees through SKEP. It also authorizes CSCDA to form assessment districts within our city's boundaries, conduct assessment proceedings, and levy assessments against the property of participating owners. This evening, James Hamel, managing director of CSCDA, is here this evening to give a brief presentation about the benefits of the program, provide information about what projects could be eligible, and what the city's role would be if it were to participate. So with that, I'd like to welcome James Hamel.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and members of the council, James Hamel, managing director with CSCDA, and thank you for having me this evening. Just to give you a brief overview, you've heard who we are, a little bit about the program, as mentioned, created back in 2003, so 17 years old now, and have issued about $700 million in bonds throughout the state of California. The program is offered through multiple agencies. We have 108 throughout the state of California, and done 266 projects within the area here. The county of San Mateo is a member to the program, City of Millbrae is also a participant, but a pretty broad spectrum, as you look across the northern California area and the southern California area. This is used by a broad group of developer groups. You'll see on this list here, it goes from small to large, so a large group of developers are using this program as a tool for their financing with impact fees and improvements, and I'll get a little bit more into the details of how this works. So the benefits to a city like yourself is, this is a turnkey program that really takes the onus off your staff and the time to put together this type of financing, and a couple slides later, I'll go as to what we do in terms of the process, and what you do from the city perspective. This can finance projects as small, of, in impact fees or infrastructure, of $500,000, all the way up to $10 million. So typically, you cannot go down to that low amount, and you'd have, you'd have to do other, some other type of financing versus this. The reason we're able to do that is we pool projects from all across the state, so you're getting cost-effective financing for 10, 15, 20 projects, so the cost is spread across. The advantage of the developers is that they're able to put this as part of their equity stack when they're building out this project, and it can provide competitive rates for the financing that they're doing. What we've also seen is that, because this is a pool program, is investors out there see this as a, more like a mutual fund, so the rates are much lower than you would get on a standalone financing. So what can be financed in the program? Typically, it's, the eligible improvements are all hard, infrastructure improvements, streets, sidewalks, storm drains. It doesn't include fees such as school fees, affordable housing fees, or police fees. So it's really hard, infrastructure impact fees or infrastructure can be financed under the program itself. So how does the city become a member and participate? The city is already a member to CSCDA. The last time we were here was in 2017, for the Brunswick Apartments. We helped finance that project. The city adopts a one-time resolution to participate in this program, and within that resolution, you are authorizing CSCDA to levy an assessment within the city. Now, that does not mean that we don't contact your city, work with the city in terms of the projects. City staff has to approve every application that comes through, and that is a process that we work diligently with your staff to do. So, a developer will complete an application for the program. Once that application is complete, we work with your staff for the program to confirm everything is correct in terms of improvements and/or impact fees. There, if there are improvements being done, there's an acquisition agreement in which the city will acquire those improvements when they are completed, and then the city signs off on a form that says you are complying with all federal tax laws. What that means, simply put, is that you're not using these funds for general use, they're specifically for the project itself. So last, two slides here, here's what we are doing, the developers are doing, and the city is doing from this perspective. So, the top line is where we are today, is you are adopting the resolution, or potentially adopting the resolution here. After that point, our board conducts all the proceedings, we issue the bonds for the project, and then we administer the district. That includes continuing disclosure, rebates, any tax rule splits, and if there are any delinquencies or foreclosures on the properties, we handle that. Your city, and your city attorney does not have to deal with that. All entitlements are done by the developers, and working closely with the local agency, and then the fees, and everything paid for the property and the bond payments are borne by the developer or the property owner themselves. The last slide here just kind of gives you a peek at what we did last year, and kind of gives you an idea of real life. We do three bond issuances a year, one in the spring, one in the summer, and one at the end of the year. The interest rates, as you can see, are extremely low for this type of financing. Our first bond issuance last year went out at 4.33%, fixed for 30 years. Second one went out at 3.88%. All these are fixed for 30 years, and as you can see, it's a combination of between 14 and 10 projects, or 15 at the high end, 10 projects here. 14 and 10 projects, or 15 at the high end, 10 projects here, and that brings the economies of scales to this. In addition, you'll see at the very bottom, it's projects from all over the state, you have West Sacramento, you have San Diego, you have Indian Wells, who are all put into this pool. The one thing I'd like to mention about this slide is nothing is cross-collateralized, so if a project in Indian Wells goes bad, it does not affect the city of Daly City. Everything is individually packaged so that if there is a problem, nothing comes back to the city itself in terms of risk. So with that, it's a brief overview of the program, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. At this point, do my colleagues have any questions? No questions. May I have a motion to open a public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Once again, there are no cards this evening. Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing cities' participation in the statewide community infrastructure program with the California Statewide Communities Development Authority?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on to item number 10, thank you. Oh, sure. Then open item number, okay. Okay, so at this moment, we're moving over to item number eight to add the AMI levels and unrent levels to item number eight, so do I make a motion to go back to item number eight? City Attorney?
Just that.
Okay.
So given that these are smaller units, we expect that the household sizes would be anywhere from one to two persons. Seventy percent AMI for a one-person household is $79,075 per year, and for a two-person household, it's $90,375 per year. And then the rents could range anywhere from a little over $1,000 for the micro studios to up to $2,219 for the one-bedroom. And again, the income levels and the rents would fluctuate depending on changes to the AMI.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Motherhead, and I appreciate that, that will be in the minutes to let the community know. Thank you. Moving on to item number 10, appropriate funds and award construction contract for the police parking lot security fence project. Mr. Yip?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. I'm Kevin Fair, presenting the item tonight, I'm your city engineer, and I'm pleased to present the staff report to appropriate funds and award a construction contract for the police parking lot security fence project. On June 26, 2017, the city council approved the parking lot security fence project as a mid-cycle adjustment to the 1718 capital improvement program budget. The project was approved to be funded with $225,000 of AB-1600 police funds and $75,000 for asset forfeiture funds, for a total of $300,000. The police parking lot security fence project proposes to install a security fence and CMU wall here around the police department's existing parking lot. An automated gate, a manual gate, pedestrian gates, along with landscaping and irrigation will also be installed. The project was advertised for bids in October, and two bids were received in December. Bids ranged from $544,000 to about $817,000. The bids and the engineer's estimate are summarized in the staff report. Determination of the low bidder was based on the low bid. Golden Bay Construction of Hayward has been in business since 1983, they hold the required Class A contractor's license, it's currently in good standing as well. Golden Bay Construction has successfully completed the Walnut Creek-Bart parking lot, the Brewster Avenue Road modifications improvement project in Redwood City, as well as Oregon's breastway improvements for the county of Santa Clara. The low bid for this project is 150% higher than the engineer's estimate that cited in the report. Within the Bay Area's current construction industry market, increased costs for skilled labor and raw materials have resulted in higher bid prices from qualified contractors. Another factor contributing to the high cost here is the additional effort needed to coordinate multiple subcontractors. The project itself was bid during the winter to even further attempt to attract a wider pool of contractors, however, rebidding the projects would unlikely, or would be unlikely to result in lower bids, as the rebid will compete with additional work coming up in the nearby summer season. If the project is awarded as recommended, construction is anticipated to commence in April and to be completed in September. For the fiscal impact, the total estimated cost for the project is $730,000. That includes $75,000 for design, excuse me, the $544,321 for contract award, as well as an additional 20% for contingency, construction inspection, and contract administration. With that, an additional $430,000 above the $300,000 that was previously allocated is required to fully fund the project. And so approving this action, it would allocate and transfer an additional $170,000 of AB-1600 police funds, as well as $260,000 of federal asset forfeiture funds to fully fund the project. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council accept all bids and award a construction contract to Golden Bay Construction of Hayward in the amount of $544,321, and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary contracts to complete the project. We further recommend that city council approve the design documents, affirm the secret determination of categorical exemption, and to appropriate the $170,000 of AB-1600 police funds and the $260,000 of federal asset forfeiture funds to fully fund this project. And I'm available to answer any further questions or provide additional information.
Thank you very much for your presentation. At this point, are there any questions for staff?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. At this point, may we have roll call, please?
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on to item 11, award of the construction contract for West Lake Library HVAC and roof replacement project. Now, Ms. Yip?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. Staff recommends that the city accept all bids, waive minor irregularities, and award a construction contract to Roofing and Solar Construction of Novado, California, in the amount of $952,000 for the West Lake Library HVAC and roof replacement project, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary contracts to complete the project. Staff further recommends the city council approve the design documents, assume the secret determination of categorical exemption, and authorize the transfer of $840,000 from the Dozier Senior Center complex roof replacement project to fully fund the West Lake Library HVAC and roof replacement. The city council authorized agreement with IMEC to do the design, its plans and specifications, and construction estimate for the project. The HVAC system at the Westlake Library is antiquated and deteriorated to the point that repairs have become costly, and air circulation throughout the building is poor. Certain components of the HVAC system are not serviceable due to the inaccessibility. The project will replace all four units and the four exterior roof enclosures, and any associated ductwork, piping, exhaust fans, and the digital control, DCC, DDC, temperature control system, guard rail, and associated structural and electrical work. In addition, the roof requires replacement, the built-up roof is in poor condition and is past the suggested manufacturer's lifespan. The roof and HVAC replacement were both identified in the facility assessment report prepared for Westlake Library. The project was advertised and received three bids, which ranged from $952,000 to $1,540,000. Determination of the low bid was based on the lowest bid from Roofing and Solar Construction, and they have been in business since 2016. The bidder holds the required Class B contractor's license and have done similar projects in the area. The engineer's estimate was prepared by a third-party consultant, which specializes in construction estimates. Although the low bid for the project was under engineer's estimate, is significantly higher than originally estimated when it was conceived in the biennial 2017 and 2018 CIP budget. In the Bay Area's current construction industry market, increased costs for skilled labor and raw materials has resulted in higher bid prices from qualified contractors. It is anticipated that construction costs will continue to increase, therefore, staff is recommending to move forward with this project. Additional funds are available from the Dozier Senior Center Roof Replacement Project. The city accepted and appropriated state-of-California grant funds totaling in one and a half million dollars to fund the roof at Dozier Senior Center, and if approved, the Westlake HVAC and roof replacement would utilize these unexpendated funds. The total estimated cost for Westlake Library HVAC and roof replacement is $1.32 million, and this includes $126,000 for design, $952,000 for the contract award, and a 25% for contingency, construction inspection, and contract administration costs. An additional $840,000 above the previously adjusted budget of $480,000 in the adopted fiscal 2017 and 2018 CIP budget is required to fully fund the project, and this will transfer $840 of unexpendated funds from Dozier Senior Roof to the Westlake HVAC and roof replacement. Staff is available to answer any questions from city council members?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Are there any questions from my colleagues regarding this item for capital improvements?
Quick question, maybe just over my head, but when, if we do approve, when do we start? And when will it end or complete?
Oh, we're anticipate to start construction in March of this year?
Oh, I see.
And be completed in August?
In August of 2020?
That's correct.
If there are any, no other questions for staff, I entertain a motion.
I have another question. How does this affect programming at that branch?
So the facilities will be open during construction, we may need to utilize some of the parking that's off the streets to, for debris bins, but other than that, facilities will be completely open during construction, and we should be able to work maybe on some, on one of the off days, I believe they're closed on Mondays.
Thank you.
I just have a quick one, Vice Mayor.
Councilwoman Di Giovanni?
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to say, I know this is long overdue, and it's really our facilities, so I want to thank you for addressing that, and Mr. Chu.
Okay, thank you, city council member.
It's not healthy for them to be in there.
So I think it's somewhat related, but not related, because we got to take care of the roof replacement project with, in partnership with Assemblymember Filting and providing us the grants, now we're able to do this other project, and that's why there is kind of a transfer of funds. Last year, or two years ago, we're able to get funding from the state to do capital improvements, and so now we're able to do this project, which is definitely needed.
Definitely.
So I'm glad to see this moving forward, and so with that, I move to award the construction for the contract for West Lake Library HVAC and roof replacement project. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have roll call, please.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you, city council members.
Item number 12, this will be the second reading for the ordinance number 1435, adding chapter 2.58 to the municipal code establishing small business commission. Ms. Zimmerman?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As you recall, this item came before the city council at the last regularly scheduled meeting for introduction. It is up before the council for adoption by roll call, and it is second reading ordinance number 1435.
Thank you very much. Move to adopt the ordinance.
May I ask? I had asked regarding, at the last meeting, to have this commission meeting televised, is that something that needs to be included in the ordinance?
No, it does not.
Doesn't, okay, all right, good. And then also, the ordinance said that the meetings are going to start at 6:00 PM. I thought that our commission meetings usually start at 7:00. So I'm just wondering what the, should we be consistent, should we change it?
It varies, in the top of my head, the personnel board meets at 6:00 PM, so it's, it can vary.
So I'll leave it up to staff, and that's fine with me.
Will it, will the meeting time, if it's stated in here, be codified and cannot be moved in the future, or?
That's correct, if it is noted here, it would be scheduled as a regularly scheduled meeting. If we needed to change it, we'd have to change the ordinance.
Okay, so I think, Councilmember Buena Ventura, do you have any suggestions, but given that it's 6 o'clock, maybe, I think you have some thought?
Yeah, I was just thinking that some of these businesses, they might want to stay, you know, I don't know how long, but they might want to stay until they're closed of business, or also the commute, if they, if they're commuting from far away, so I was just, I was wondering, maybe a 7 o'clock start time would be better, but I don't know, I'll leave it up to you.
We could add that, if you would like to change it, I mean, that's not a substantive change necessarily.
Yeah, I think, I mean, given the fact that maybe business owners want to be able to close their shop or whatnot, in case they're a small business, but, Ms. Malpe?
Staff can absolutely make sure that 7:00 PM start time, but if you wanted to codify it, that's an alternative as well, however you want to do, it's fine with me.
Okay, well, I think because we stipulated right now, at 6 o'clock, if we state it, it's going to be it, so we need to make a decision on the timing, so I think the later the better, I mean, that's just what I think, if you're having.
We could make that change, I mean, it's not.
I make a motion to make it to 7:00.
Okay. Second?
Okay. Let's have a roll call for the, with that change, and we have a roll call for the adoption of the ordinance.
To 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM. Is that a motion to change it to 7:00?
Yes, yeah.
We have a second?
All in favor?
No, actually, let's have a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Second, wait a second.
Second, I seconded it.
Thank you. Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
I just have one quick question.
Yes.
Just a real quick question, because I know we're going to go for different businesses, and there's going to be five positions, correct? How do we make sure that we don't have a crossover, like, say, one is a, like, one restaurant owner, or two restaurant owners, or how do we classify, what type of representation do we want?
Well, the applications will go before the council.
Right.
Council will appoint.
But we're not able to talk to each other, so when we bring our person forward?
Right, you would talk about it in the public meeting.
Yeah, so if that person was another same type of business?
It doesn't stipulate the type of business necessarily.
But I would just like to see a variety of businesses.
Right, and so that would be at the purview of the council when they appoint and receive the applications?
Because it's really kind of the same processes as other commissions and board?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's no, there's no change in that process?
Right, the applications will proceed, and the council will public them.
Okay, thank you very much. So if there are no other additions, do we need? So, if there are no other additions, do we need to? Okay. Okay, great. Moving on to item 13. Second reading of the ordinance number 1436, amending daily city zoning map to establish planned development standards for PD 31A.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. This also came before the city council at the last regularly scheduled meeting for introduction. This is a second reading for adoption ordinance number 1436 for development PD standards, PD 31A.
Are there any questions? This is just the second reading of the ordinance. So, I move to approve the second reading of ordinance number 1436, amending the daily city zoning map to establish planned development standards for PD 31A. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, may we have roll call?
Ms. D'Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much.
At this point, if there's any public appearances or oral communications, I do have, I don't have a speaker card for you, but would you like to speak? If you do, we'll just need to have official speaker card.
I have this, it will.
Okay, great. So, we have Ms. Teresa Ferrer with the United States Census Bureau.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is merely just, say hello, that actually in my role right now, I wanted to inform you that to add to the wealth of information that's being given, the city's doing a great job with regards to the census's participation, as well as the county, I hope to be able to round that up and let you know that as the federal part of that, I'm in your neighborhood, I'm down the street, and it's merely, it's just a hello. We can do future presentations if you like. I do know that elected officials will be trained on Thursday, I believe, in Belmont. So, at this point, I would just rather just say hi and give you a, let you know I'm here.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. We know that the census is extremely important for our communities, and that everyone needs to be counted, and it's so important that everyone gets counted in our city, in our county. About $10,000 average per person, if we lose out on that, if we don't get counted, so please spread the word to everyone. Thank you so much. Are there any other? Have a quick evening today. And so, we're going to move on to appointments. Any appointments on any board or commission member, membership committee appointments this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to reports for the council committee. Any reports for the council committee? Okay, Dr. Rod, please.
I attended the Peninsula Clean Energy, AKA PCE, meeting on Thursday, January 23rd. We talked about the strategic plan that they're trying to create in terms of rebranding, or not rebrand, but branding and make it known throughout the county who Peninsula Clean Energy is. They also talked about a resilient, resiliency plan in terms of having cleaner energy sources as a means to have systems work when there are times of, like, shut offs. And also, we went into a discussion about reach codes again, and also a very healthy, maybe two-hour discussion on the use of different forms of energy from hydroelectricity and nuclear energy, which was a very, very healthy discussion. We got through it, and yeah.
Thank you so much for representing us there on Peninsula Clean Energy, really an important, you know, committee to be in regionally, and especially around the need for all of us to do our part for climate change, and really appreciate that. Are there any other council committees to report on? Okay, council committee meetings from January 10 to January 27. We did have, I believe it was a development meeting with Mayor Sylvester and I in regards to something that passed this evening, talking about the housing for the teachers and workforce housing and staff for the Jefferson Union High School District. So, that was a committee that we had at, both of us had the pleasure of speaking with leadership and staff. So, that's something that the community all voted for, something that everyone should be proud of, and I believe they do have a groundbreaking ceremony that will be happening on February 5th, which is really exciting to see this, because if anything, it all helps our students, it helps our teachers, and helps our community as a whole. And then the other council committee meeting, I don't have it with me as, did we have another development one? I feel like that's, affordable housing. Oh, yes, I can't forget, Ms. Betsy Sobel. Thank you so much for your hard work. So, we did meet with our affordable housing committee with Mayor Sylvester and I. It's always a fruitful conversation. The staff has brought about excellent work around looking at a draft inclusionary rental housing program, the guidelines. We have not formally done this in the city of Daly City, but it's important work to be done, given the fact that we do have development and rental opportunities down the pipeline. Also, the extension of East Mulkey, the conditional loan agreement. As we all know, in the Bay Area, there is an extreme need to sustain affordable housing opportunities. And one very unique opportunity that Daly City did was actually retain about 16 units of housing in partnership to provide a loan to Sand Hill. So, for instance, one way we can have affordable housing is to build affordable housing, but another way to preserve and stabilize is buying buildings, apartment buildings, that can be maintained as affordable housing rents. And so, I think we're looking at this issue on all aspects, and very thankful and proud for the staff's work on this. Also, there was a request from HART to borrow Daly City Housing Trust Funds, from our Affordable Housing Trust Funds. We needed more analysis on this and more information in order to move forward, to allow our own housing trust funds to be utilized by HART. We, I think, in that decision, right, in the committee, it was moving forward to have, garner more information. We could not, and we want to ensure that we have enough housing trust funds for our projects here in Daly City if need be. And those were the two meetings for the city council meeting agenda. So, thank you so much for that. Any other council meetings? Now, moving on to city council reports. Any city council reports for my colleagues? Councilmember D'Giovanni?
Yeah, I picked this appropriate time rather than the adjournment, because I just wanted to let people know that, a reminder that today is International Holocaust Remembrance Day, and I know that there was a, it's the 75th year of the liberation of Auschwitz, and so there were survivors actually there, and we have very few survivors left to tell the story. And even though I know that even in the Philippines, they had that movie, and there was other ones that saved the Jews, and also hubbub in China and other places that were saved, we need to remember that Auschwitz on that liberation day, and that what these people have, many of have perished. So, the history lives on, but we don't have very many people to tell it, and it's not in our schools. So, when we talk about putting things in education, we need to promote and remember six million Jews perished that day, along with about 1 million. The first that went actually was 997 teenage girls were picked up, and they were told they were going to a job site, and they never came back. So, today, again, is the 75th anniversary, and there's a saying that it's called Yama Hoshana, and that I hope that we can maybe bring in Daly City a remembrance maybe next year, or because we don't have very many left, San Francisco has a few in the organization, and we have few left here that are first-generation survivors. So, the stories need to be told, and I appreciate the time, and to remember that antisemitism does live, and it has increased, and even in the little things like in recognition of people's holidays, Jewish holidays, and if it's written in an email, and if there's silence on the other end, silence, silence creates antisemitism, and that to not to be recognized for someone's holiday and not to be worked with. When I spoke with the city manager, I'm hoping that we can move forward, that many in our staff, that for their holidays, like Rosh Hashanah and high holidays, other cities, if they have a Monday meeting, they have, they move it to a Tuesday, because that's considered a high holiday. So, I didn't know where that was in our policy, but I would, out of respect for many of our employees that don't say anything, that we look into that and move forward, and make sure that even in an email, please acknowledge the person on the other end, and acknowledge that we can work around and work together to find another date to come together for either a dinner or whatever, that you don't leave the person out on credits, because according to the Anti-Defamation League, silence is antisemitism. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much. Are there any other city council reports?
I'll just, maybe we could tag team on this, Ray, but the donations for the victims of the Taal volcano eruption, which was sponsored by many organizations, Ceramani, Republic Services, Philippine News, Phil Am Star News, Phil Am Radio, ABS-CBN, Lincoln Capamilia, ABS-CBN Foundation, LBC, Conception Community USA, MedShare, TFC, Manila Mail, Apokipilipino, but if it's okay to defer to you, Ray?
No, no, go ahead, please, go ahead.
Well, I just want to, you know, Ray doesn't want to shine, but, you know, I just want to give a shout out to Ray as well, because he was the spirit and the organizer, I would say, of this whole drive, that was also one of the main people, or main organizations was Filipino Bayanihan Resource Center, PBRC, and all the volunteers, I see Christina here, some of our staff, many people, Justin Manalo, the Vice Mayor, the mayor, were out there packing up many boxes of everything from toiletries to baby needs to adult diapers. It's like, it was like everything, and Vice Mayor, if you would like to add on as well?
Thank you, Dr. Rod. It was just really beautiful to see, and thank you very much for your leadership, Councilmember Ray, and the call out to the community was beautiful. Everyone brought in donations, people donated monetary, and I think in, you know, need and crisis, that there's something in the Tagalog word to share, and it's called Bayanihan. And Bayanihan is basically in the Philippines, they had nipahuts, and whenever you had to move the nipahut to another place, everyone from the village would help that person's house and to move it somewhere else. And that's the spirit that we saw across the Daly City residents that came to support the Taal victims. So, it was definitely a very moving moment to see everyone. I mean, lots of balik bayan boxes, and I mean, it was packing, I've never seen, I learned how to pack a box. Someone, I was like, I was like, how do you push it together? They're like, no, no, you got to use your whole body weight. And so, thank you for everyone that was there and everyone that contributed. So, thank you, Dr. Rod, for bringing that up. And so, are there any other city council? I do want to mention, I, on Martin Luther King Junior Days of Service, Mayor Glenn Sylvester, Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura, and myself was able to go to JFK, John F. Kennedy School with hands-on Bay Area, and also Kaiser, to do a service day with the Daly City Community Center with Second Home. So, it was really a day of action, you know, Martin Luther King stand for, stood for equity and to fight against injustice, but also as a day of action, really to give back to the community. So, it was working on beautifying the school, as well as beautifying the nonprofit space that provides integral services for our community called Second Home. And then also, really had the wonderful pleasure to march in the Martin Luther King March that day alongside, you know, the community in San Francisco, marching from the Caltrain all the way to the Yerba Guena Gardens with Mayor Lenderbead. And so, that happened last Monday. So, at this moment, if there's no other reports from city council, I'm moving over to staff reports.
I have no staff reports, but thank you, Vice Mayor and council members for asking. We do have some housekeeping, and this is the time I send it over to you, City Clerk.
Okay. Okay, so, is that after the meeting? Okay, thank you very much. So, at this moment, it looks, we will be moving to adjourn tonight's council meeting in the memory of the following. Marco Hastiliana, and you have Desi Dagan in the audience today. Marco Hastiliana, on January 9, 2020, the Filipino community lost one of its brightest stars, Marco Hastiliana. At the age of 44, he died of an unexpected heart attack. His death is being mourned all across California. If you look at money as a measure of success, his GoFundMe has nearly twice in size, which proves the love that people have for him. But the true measure of Marco's life is the impact he's given to the Filipino community. As a gifted branding expert, he was one of the co-creators for Undiscovered Night Market that helped launch the Soma Pilipinas Filipino Cultural District. The impact of Undiscovered is really an amazing space and place for the community. If you think about an intergenerational moment where you see the lolas and lolos, which means grandmother and grandfather, come to this space, feel like they can walk across the stage and dance, and then also see young people with their young families, just, you know, celebrating culture, celebrating food, celebrating history. There's a beautiful synergy that happens where you feel community, and that's what Undiscovered is, and it's, you know, not only in San Francisco, it's really a regional place where it's a celebration of, you know, Filipino culture, but also community, and that is something that was beautiful and really inspiring that Marco was be, was able to co-create. And that is something, um, that was beautiful and really inspiring that Marco was be, was able to co-create. And something that will continue to last and something that will impact the younger generation as they learn about their culture, celebrate, and be proud of who they are. For those of you out there, the memorial, memorial services will be held in Rose Hills in Southern California this weekend. Also, uh, in memory of Dominador Abissames Caballero. Dominador Caballero, um, was born on November fifth, nineteen fifty-one, and, um, passed away on December twentieth, twenty nineteen. He was a proud resident of Daly City since nineteen eighty-seven. He was a wonderful, kind, and generous uncle, and many called him Tito Domeng. One who never grew old, he was a jokester with infectious smile, and his heart was pure and gold. Unselfishly and quietly suffering from his illness, he faced his challenge with dignity. He knew that all of us would end up leaving this world at some time, and in some grand scheme of things, it does not matter when. Knowing this, he accepted this, that his contract was about to end. And he did not ask for sympathy and stayed in our hearts and minds as he wished to be remembered. Tito Domeng, may you have heaven in your heart, peace in your soul, and angels around you. You will be missed. Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of June K. Newhouse. June Rose Newhouse was born on June seventeenth, nineteen twenty-six, to Hugo and Irene Crin. She was the matriarch of her family and passed away on June, pardon me, January twenty-first, twenty twenty. She was a proud native San Franciscan, but she was an educator in Daly City, loving mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, sister, aunt, and daughter. She attended Parkside Elementary, Abraham Lincoln, and UC Berkeley. In life, while she studied at UC Berkeley in nineteen forty-nine, she was a passionate educator and a proud, strong Jewish woman. She taught hundreds of students and touched their lives in a daily manner. She was survived by her brother Harold, children Mark, Susan, and other grandchildren. Memorial services at the Chapel at Hills of, um, excuse me, Eternity Memorial Park, twelve ninety-nine El Camino Real Coma, and Thursday at one PM, January the thirtieth. Thank you. Also, I'd like to close in the memory of Officer Munir, excuse me if I mispronounce it, Diaz. His nickname was Mo. He was an officer with the Los Gatos Monte Sereno Police. He died unexpectedly on January the twenty-first, twenty twenty. He left behind two young children and a pregnant wife, sadly. And it was said that he went to Panorama Elementary. He graduated from Artero Nova locally. He got his bachelor's degree in criminal justice at San Jose State. He proudly served as one of the first Muslims in that community, where the chief proudly gave him permission to wear his beard and use his sense of humor throughout the police department. So I sadly close in his memory, and he was a very young man and a loss to his community and to the law enforcement community. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. Also, adjourning in memory, uh, with the helicopter crash victims, Kobe Bryant, Gianna Bryant, John Altobelli, Carrie Altobelli, Alyssa Altobelli, Christina Mauser, Ara Zabayan, Sarah Chester, and Peyton Chester.
Can I also add, um, as a person that grew up in Southern California, um, sharing the same, uh, we both graduated in nineteen ninety-six, and I just want to know that, I just want to let everybody know he was a, a cultural icon of our generation. And when I found out about his passing, along with his daughter, along with, um, Orange Coast College baseball coach, John, John Altobelli, um, Christine Mauser, who I know, I think I have friends that know her that live in Southern California, it was heartbreaking. And, um, to lose a person that I looked up to, even though he was my contemporary, was a hard thing to deal with, like, the last couple of days, as a person that loves basketball, but he transcended basketball, and his memory of mama mentality to just strive and work hard and, um, do what, do what's passionate for, for you, and influence on the whole generation of people, to a member of you, Kobe.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Councilmember D. Giovanni?
Thank you. Okay, and if there's not enough tragedy, we lost US firefighters that were out fighting our fires in Australia. There were Captain Ian Macbeth, First Officer Paul Clyde Hudson, Flight Engineer Rick De Morgan. And what didn't make it to the list is the crash that killed the fifty Marines and the Navy sailor, and the, also the crash in Afghanistan as well. I received multiple to our law enforcement officers. It was too much to keep up with, but hopefully we can get the names. It was a flood full of losing law enforcement officers sadly this month on reading post. And I also want to take a personal Altobelli, uh, family, and even to the other crash victims, but happen on a personal note to know the Altobellis, and sadly, my heart goes out and breaks for all. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. Also, in memory of Beatrice Kodama Gunsberg, Daly City Police Department's Diane McCarthy's mother. In, in honor of, uh, everyone that we've mentioned this evening, may we all please have a moment of silence.